I'll call this review to Florida, Asian Projects Review, annual release and a pledge of allegiance.
Certainly.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right. Discussion approval of last meeting's minutes.
I'll move as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. On to the calendar, any discussion, independence, and currents. Nor do I. On then to previously signed documents, discussion, motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. On to Superintendent Wetherby, Michelle, you want to sell your vehicle at auction.
Hey, Michelle, how much you want for it?
Well, it doesn't have a transmission currently, so that's hard issue. So yes, I'm requesting permission to sell 2014 Ford Explorer has hundred and twenty-four thousand miles. It also requires a new transmission currently, which we have an estimate between fifty-six hundred to six thousand two per pair. So I'm asking to sell it at the auction due to the fact of the expense to repairs.
So it'd be like putting fifty dollars into a dollar watch, I think.
Pretty much.
Do they put any sort of reserve on something like that, or does it just go to the start at zero?
I honestly, I've never.
It's no reserve, it's whatever it gets, it gets.
We can don't, we can send.
For one day he turned in.
That's bad.
This is one of our old reserves anyway, so it's been pretty well used.
Or to the Sheriff's Department to us, and we've used it as much as we could.
Bill, you're applying the engine probably weak too tired.
Sorry, Bill.
Are you applying the engines probably weakened tired as well?
No, I mean, I think it's still a good vehicle for somebody who wants to invest, you know, make the investment, they'll pick it up three grand, four grand at the auction.
Truck transmission.
And then, yeah, some, that will go to a junkyard somewhere, it's not good, it's not good for total like usage, so, but. Yeah, taxi company will buy it.
For the cost of it.
Michelle, if the vehicle were serviceable, how useful would it be to you in the directions, would you be using it a lot?
We could use it. But the cost versus benefit was to invest six thousand dollars into a car that has almost a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it. I didn't think was a good way to spend money currently. We do have two new ones right now.
John, do you have any familiarity with this vehicle we're discussing, have you seen it, any thoughts that we?
It's not worth putting a dime in.
Okay, very good, all right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Sheriff, John, thanks for chipping in. Okay.
I'm sure it'll come, but we assumed enough to donate ones who were.
Okay, Commissioners, next, got the formation of the union negotiation team, Deborah. Where are we?
I'm requesting that you consider, consider the formation of the union negotiating team. It used to be the finance director, the HR director, and the county administrator for many years. Then positions were combined, the county administrator became the HR director and the finance director, and then a department head was, oh, a commissioner was added then. And then more recently, when finance director left, then it was just, then a department head was added. Most recently. Oh, I think you guys added. And I've just found, I think it's gonna go better for us without a department head, and I really need the finance director back on. So my request is to have it be the county administrator, that be a commissioner, and finance director. And of course, we get operational direction from the department heads as needed, but as you know, this is primarily a function of wages and benefits.
What department contract?
Um, all of them, which as they come up, and we don't have any this year. And next year, I think we have the Sheriff's Department. And possibly support staff, that's whole nother problem, because when you get to support staff, we have members from multiple departments. So there's really no department head anymore.
So if I recall, Deborah, when I first got here three and a half years ago, Commissioner Taylor and you were handling the negotiations, and I think he was going pretty well. And then when Commissioner Taylor retired and Commissioner Hodges joined, he filled Hunter's role with equal success. So I'm gonna suggest it would probably be a good combination with the county administrator, Commissioner Hodges, or Sharp. So, okay, so Commissioners, what say you?
Concerned with the recommendation.
That's fine. Deborah, do we need a motion for this?
No.
Okay, very good.
I just needed your consent.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, Commissioners, on to review of the capital improvements plan, and that would involve. John, you coming up with this, or are we working together?
I can't find this to make sure, if you had questions, somebody was there to speak to the project.
It's really all three of us, there's, I can explain the capital improvements.
Okay, sure.
The finance director, facilities manager, county administrator form a committee that presents the capital improvements plan. I'm bringing it to you right now, ordinarily, we do it during the budget process. But because of the discussion about solar and then your request at the last meeting about what would you do with the money if we didn't spend seven hundred and fifty thousand on solar. So I wanted you to see this now, these are the projects that we have, we can easily spend seven hundred and fifty thousand, we have projects far more than that. Here, without even looking at the budget, where once you do look at the budget, there are projects in there that you might find appropriate for using ARPA funds as well. So this is twofold, I wanted you to see the capital improvements plan and know what will be presented to you. And also just to be thinking, I guess I would make a big, I would, I think there's a real, there's a lot to think about here, the jail. You know, there's five hundred thousand dollars requested this year for just pieces. And then next year, another five hundred thousand or more pieces of it, like how much money? Are, you know, you're, I guess the point is for you to really think about, we'll be pouring a lot of money into repairing that old jail, knowing that it is. It's gonna have to be replaced somewhere down the line, I mean, there's a line on here for it. Projected out for six years, which is as far as our plan goes, but at some point, there needs to be a discussion about that building. And what's gonna happen with it.
Is the master plan, does that include anything of replacement in the jail, placement of the jail, master plan?
That facilities analysis that we had done, the planet, that, that plan, I believe, shows demolition in the, the old jail. And replacing it with a new jail and community correction center. So we didn't end up doing that, but yeah, that was the plan then. And that's where that famous forty-two million dollar plan.
Which is a lot when they have.
That was never discussed inside this room, but that, that was what that was for, to replace the jail. So obviously, that number's probably only going up since then.
So would the next steps be, if that's something we were considering, would the next steps be a feasibility study of a facility?
I would say so would, I mean, I'm not prepared here for this, but I think there would need to be something to get that process moving. Looking at what are the deficiencies, what needs to be addressed, what, what could we do in the meantime that would maybe hold us for three to five years?
I mean, seeing, you know, the projection here of well over a million dollars in the next two years. That before we put a million, before we put a million dollars in it, I would like to know that we're doing the right thing with a million dollars.
And how long would that last you?
Right, exactly.
So I mean, I think maybe we're, we're at the point where we, we need some sort of a study or analysis done of, of the building.
Do you know what that would be called, John, like, what, can you, do you think, I mean, is it a facilities analysis, needs analysis, I guess a needs analysis, or like that?
Feasibility study of building, or?
Yeah, we can look at something like that, and even that, and get a price, because of course, that's gonna cost us money even to do that, but at least. That might give us some direction and maybe some phasing in or determination of what are the most urgent needs.
So, just to recap, Deborah, for the, what needs to be done in the jail next year, the twenty-five, two hundred thousand for the boiler?
Yes.
That absolutely has to be done.
Yes.
No getting around that.
Or nineteen seventy-six.
Okay. Probably extremely inefficient as well, and then, I know, Michelle, you brought this to our attention earlier. So the toilet showers, pipeline, the old pipes, so that's a half right there, so that's seven hundred thousand. What am I missing?
Twenty-six is another million dollars, or half million dollars for doors, locks, and floor. Seventy thousand for cameras, so we're, so you're, you're over a million two. Two years.
But the estimated replacement cost for a new facility is?
I wrote down fifty thousand, fifty million dollars.
Right.
That's based on nothing more than what I hear on the news.
Right.
Do we, any of our other county jails have recently constructed state-of-the-art jails, is Rockingham?
Do not.
Or Carroll, or?
Rockingham is currently at the end of their build phase, they're for a new facility. I know we saw in county.
Do you know, Michelle, how many beds do we're gonna have in Rockingham?
Not sure, we wouldn't need the capacity Rockingham would need, but I can find out when.
Would you mind finding out what the capacity is and what the bill of cost is? My guess is they'll need a larger facility than we will.
Yes.
So that could give us an outline of, of what county we'd be on the hook for. And Deborah, is it likely the county will be in a position in five or six years to be able to bond fifty million dollars?
Yes, I'm sure we'd be able to.
I know Commissioner Ware's concern is, look, you know, if we're gonna put two or three million dollars over the next five or six years into something that's to tear down anyway. But the facilities manager is telling me that, for example, the boiler won't survive another year. And the superintendent's saying that the plumbing, showers, toilets, pipelining, that has, that cannot wait much longer, so.
Maybe it's not six years, there's, there's new deal, I'd give two years of that, I guess, is my point.
Well, that's really why I wanted to, to say, start saying those words to you, because if we don't start talking about it, we know it's gonna be years down the line. It's not something that happens easily around here to build a new facility, so. We really do need some professional assistance, I think, to determine how much money do we put into it at this point.
So about ten years ago, when the jail expansion was initiated, I heard numbers thirty, forty million. The amount actually expended was eight million for what we have, but obviously, it's inadequate.
Much less than eight million.
Right, because it's not a secure facility either.
Right.
Right, so.
The seventy-seven million or?
A forty, a forty-two million dollar figure that I remember was for a secure facility.
Right. Now, that, that room was run out of town.
It was not that same to that at that point.
So how many beds would we need, one hundred?
Um, about a hundred, between a hundred and fifty to two hundred, our current count is literally up to ninety-three the past, our ADP is eighty-five. In the last six months, eighty-five inmates per day is the average, so our count's actually going up.
What's your total capacity for inmates?
Twenty.
And you're suggesting we build for well beyond that?
I bought a hundred fifty, because I wouldn't want to, counting, invest this kind of money and then ten years down the road.
Be too small, got it, yeah, yeah. So one hundred fifty is a, would be the projected capacity, and Rockingham just spent seven, almost eighty million. So the only question we really have there is what's their capacity in Rockingham?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would think that there's gotta be consultants out there that can look at this, the growth rate of your county, the arrest rates in the county, the, you know. Amount of people that you, you've incarcerated and how that's gone up over the years, with the buildings going on, to extrapolate a better figure than just a hundred fifty. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying anything personal, but I, I do think there would be consultants out there that could do that.
That is how we did it last time, exactly.
The firm in name called SMRT was pretty much the forefront in designing the building jails.
They've bid on our project, I remember that, didn't get it, but yeah, there's firms out there, we will, we can start looking at this. At least it'll help us figure out where to go and how to best spend the money we have.
I know the National Sheriff's Association is a jail institute, that I worked with when I worked with it, worked for them. So NSA may be somebody we might wanna contact and find out.
Aurora, Aurora, Colorado, that's NIC, National Sheriff's Crash, I was gonna say that.
That's where we went, yeah.
Well, the National Sheriff's Association, Washington, Arlington, Virginia.
Okay.
So the first step is to get a facilities analysis.
Yes.
Yes.
Quickly as we can. That's gonna be recruiting a firm to do that.
Yes. So then, I would recommend then that we not consider using ARPA money for the jail. But using the ARPA money for maybe this nursing home boiler and also the correction boiler. Just because we, we don't have time to wait for a needs analysis on the ARPA money, we need to have it obligated by the end of this calendar year.
If we find any, any contracts with the company that was gonna be doing the solar that we might have difficulty breaking, getting out of.
No, I don't think so.
We haven't signed a contract. Well, I knew the contract was, was with the.
That's right.
Go back towards attorneys.
That's right.
We, the board, have not signed a contract.
There's been no.
I just wanna make sure there wasn't something, yeah.
So, John, you're advocating then, regardless of what comes from this study, we need to replace that boiler for two hundred thousand? Even though it may be phased out two or three years, we run.
You have three boilers over there, two of them are the ones that need to be replaced in nineteen seventy-six, and neither one of them run. So we're relying on.
You're on one.
To take care of the entire jail.
So this proposal is to replace the two failed?
Is to remove the two existing and replace it with one larger, high-efficiency natural gas boiler. Replacing two with one.
One, yeah.
Ending up with two at the end of the day, kind of the same thing we've done in the nursing home, we have two large boilers, leaving a live boiler that. And we'll rotate back and forth to give up.
John, you may not be able to answer this question, but if we did do that, it'd be a possibility that those boilers could be reused in a new facility.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because you wouldn't lose a life.
So they're transferable?
So.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good point you raised then, so we won't worry about it going, getting tossed out in three, four, or five years or even less.
I just.
Because my next question is gonna be, can you just get a smaller boiler, since we're gonna throw it out in a couple of years anyway, possibly, but.
Yeah, you just throw us the same thing with somebody who replaced recently, yeah.
Okay.
The air conditioning, some of that stuff would be repurposed as well.
So you'd be able to salvage something from the old jail. Good to know, all right, so what else, Deborah?
Um, I, the camera platform in the jail. Which is on its last legs.
Currently, our camera system also includes multiple doors, is failing. Also, last Thursday, we are running through the battery packs, waiting for the company to come back and tell us exactly what we need. It's running on a platform that expired in twenty seventeen. So we can't add cameras, we can't add doors, we can't fix it either. So I'm waiting for costs of what that would actually be, but we're looking over it's eighty thousand dollars to redo the doors and the locks. I'm sorry, doors and the cameras, but again, I'm waiting to figure out exactly how bad they are. And then look at different companies to give me quotes to fix that system.
Deborah, we can address these deficiencies, because it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to go forward with the solar project due to the difficulties we're encountering with that resource. So we can do this.
You can do that.
Just need to be careful not to put in new equipment and new infrastructure that may be tossed in a few years. And we already solved the boiler dilemma, obviously, we can't scrimp on the camera platform, because, you know, surveillance is critical, and we certainly don't want any more escapees.
I think with safety of the inmates and the staff, we use cameras to, where we don't have direct supervision, we use the cameras to monitor the units for all the others, fight suicides, injuries. Or inmates and staff.
You know, depending on the cost of the camera system, it looks like you could also possibly add the dispatch. I, I guess I'm not sure, one or the other of the sheriff's projects, do you not have a preference, the van or the dispatch consoles?
I would prefer to do dispatch consoles this time around.
Yeah, I think we could probably fit that too with ARPA money, and that would be it, and we're, I think we will have fully extended all the ARPA.
John, Bill, how urgent is this transport van?
Well, we just dumped some work into it, so I think we can, we can use the van as it is for the next year or two without any major significant issues. Again, it's, it's just it's aging out, I think right now for the dispatch center, we, we bought a new radio system, we, we have, you know, new consolets coming in. But it would be good to replace all the desks and, and replace the wiring and things that are underneath the floor that are, in essence, a hazard. Again, the dispatch center hasn't been updated since two thousand twelve, and it's used twenty-four seven, the van parts, we use it when we need it. So I think we can look at the van the next couple of years out and make that plan to make a purchase then. But the dispatch center, I think, is a lot more critical now.
So to make the van a little less of a hit, when we, when you do need to replace it, lease one instead of just purchasing it?
Yeah, so I mean, leasing is fine too, I mean, that's how we've been doing a lot of our purchases now, has been through the lease program, so it extends out, you know, three years, three years of the, the payments, which is, is fine.
Okay, you wouldn't have a problem leasing.
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay.
That would be, that would be fine.
It just may be a way. Got the pain.
A comfortable solution?
Yeah.
So again, we're, we're gonna average it, I mean, things don't know now, so we've averaged, you know, a lot of years out of the thing, so I anticipate.
It doesn't owe you anything.
Yeah, definitely doesn't, and again, we, we decided, the chief and I decided to dump a little bit of money into it this year, part of it was the bodywork, because it needed the bodywork that'd be done for the. For, you know, for it to go through inspection, and then there was a sticker package and some lights that we, that we really needed to replace, because a couple of the lights were out. So, so we kinda, if you will, refurbished it with a short, short end of money. So again, if we just think in the future, you know, again, next year, maybe it's gonna, you know, the two thousand dollars will work, but that's sometimes, plus doing business, it's better than a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. So if we get, if we get a few more years out of it, then absolutely, I, again, I think the workplace where the people are locked in that box all day long, twenty-four seven, is a lot more important. For them to have a clean, good work environment, and I think that this, that part of the project would be a lot more beneficial for us on the personnel wise than purchasing a new van.
Makes sense.
And we could get to work getting quotes on this stuff, because these are pretty rough estimates on all of these, so we need to make sure we have enough money, but.
Those, those are based on a Rockingham County ban that they just.
We plan to have that for the twenty-sixth.
I think so.
What, you mean just address the?
The dispatch, yeah.
Address the remaining ARPA funds and how that's gonna be allocated.
Yes.
Budget work session.
Oh, yes.
Have final plans or proposals?
I can have an RFP done for the boiler of the jail and the nursing home, I can have done an out this week. And advertise it for public weeks, and come back with real numbers, if it's.
That makes sense, and then we just.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of time.
Address that, the, the ARPA funds and all that, a budget work session, and.
Yeah.
Get committed, what we need to get committed.
All right.
Sounds good.
Right, the Community Power Coalition, I know that you are interested and. Still can't find any reason not to, we looked at it and read the contracts, and. So the request tonight is in order to start the process for the Board of Commissioners to make a mo, to take two actions. Make a motion to authorize the county administrator, these are, these are in your packet, to enter into this joint powers agreement. With the coalition for the purpose of supporting municipalities and counties. And to appoint John Bossy to serve as the county's primary representative, and Deborah Shackett to serve as an alternate. And also a motion to establish an electric aggregation committee. Neither of these motions are binding on the county. And this joint powers agreement essentially explains how the coalition operates, how we would, how the costs are divided. Formulas, and how they can create different committees, and how they can, how you can get out of it whenever you want to. It's non-binding, but it's the first thing they need to know that you are actively interested in joining.
So Commissioners, we tried certainly good to pay to build a long-term solar rate for the county that was not in the cards, beyond our control. So this seems to make a lot of sense to afford with this, Commissioner Ware?
I agree, and this is the first step to open this up for all county residents, not necessarily us buying our power through, through the coalition, correct?
That's correct.
No reason.
I, I, I think it's a no-brainer to, you know, help residents of the county, I said before, I live in Guilford, and we're starting this month on it for the town of Guilford. So I'm gonna see quite a decrease in, like, full one out, I think everybody in the county should have advantage of that.
So I will move the first question.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, now on to the second. Aye, motion carries. Now onto the second part.
And before you make the motion on the second part, I just wanna um. I'm not clear who is going to be on this electric aggregation committee. Do you know anything about that, John?
What you said earlier is.
Okay.
So it's a full committee of two?
Yes, that's it. It's minimum of two, and as much as we need. People that we wanna put on it, but there's really. There's really nothing for those people to really do other than be point of contact with the county with coalition.
So we don't need to add a commissioner or a finance director in this particular case?
No, I think it would be beneficial if we had. I wanna have the commu, community lover, but. Um if there were people from the public, if there was someone who's particularly interested in this, who happen to know a lot about electricity. That would be beneficial. But we, we don't need any more than two. Um then you can make your motion, and then we'll, we'll start this committee with two. And then we'll.
Good debate.
Okay.
What, what is, I don't know what the motion is.
The motion is. To establish an electric aggregation committee pursuant to RSA fifty-three E colon six. To oversee the development of a plan for an electric aggregation program. And then later, after you will, you'll end up holding two public hearings, and then you will go ask the delegation for. To approve the plan that comes up.
Okay. More please.
So there's still several steps here before anything happens.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
Seems like a little. Rates.
Yeah, cool, yes.
Onto other, oh, is there other business, Deborah?
I have no other business.
I see no members of the public really, or public comment, so we may adjourn and go into non-public?
Yes, oh, okay, you want me to? Someone give you a motion to go to non-public?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Sorry.
In accordance with RSA ninety-one colon dash A colon paragraph two A. Okay, and Commissioner Waring?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
On top of the session.
Very good.